Okay, you are live.
All right, we'll call the work session for September 12th, 2022 to order. I'll do a quick roll call. Mr. Lewis, Mr. Day, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Ayers, and Chair President as well. We have discussion tonight of a welcome sign. I believe Mr. Slayton is going to lead us off with some information.
Quick PowerPoint to share with you.
All right, again, this is a work session for a welcome to signage. Mr. Brandon Dorsey and Ms. Mary Harvey Hafis have approached the Virginia Department of Transportation, BDOT, of course, and Rockbridge County to discuss the permitting process of re-erecting the welcome to signage off of Route 11 North Lee Highway. On the left-hand side, there's a map showing the location of the proposed signage. This is the same location as the previous sign. Again, it's on the west side of Route 11, approximately 400, I assume 150 feet north of the intersection of North Lee Highway and the entrance to the College Square Shopping Center. So one of the addresses, Tractor Supply, is 800 North Lee Highway. But to get everyone oriented if needed, laser pointer here, this is, of course, the College Square Shopping Center. This is Tractor Supply, heading towards Route 11, taking a left, going back to the city of Lexington, of course, right towards the Walmart area. So again, it's on the west side, approximately 150 feet north of the intersection of the College Square Shopping Center. It appears that the original welcome to historic Lexington sign, which is on the right-hand side, here was installed in the 1980s. And I apologize having had much time to do a lot of research on when it was installed, but can confirm the sign was removed by the City of Lexington Public Works on May 21st, 2021. Due to the signage being located in the VDOT right-of-way, per Virginia Administrative Code 24VAC30151750, excuse me, 570, the permit application requesting the placement of locality identification or welcome to sign within the right-of-way must be accompanied by formal resolution from the local governing body. And so, you know, in discussing the resolution process with members of the board, that we, it was determined that it would be best to start off as a work session so we could have a question-answer type period prior to decide if it should go on a formal agenda or what the next step is. So briefly reviewing section or reviewing section 60706.03-15 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. I'm gonna pass it. Pass this out. A lot of information, as always, in the land of house regulations. This is how when we're dealing with empty different organizations or clubs that could be utilized. That can utilize, I always like to break it down in a manner that's, for me, it's a little bit easier. But again, per Section 602.03 of the County Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, off-premise signs of, excuse me, off-premise informational signs of public or quasi-public nature identifying or locating a town, hospital, community center, public building, or historic place situated in Rockbridge County, Virginia, and also signs identifying or locating a school, college, YMCA, church, or other similar place of worship, Board of Trade Service Club, Soil Conservation Activity 4-H Club, Isaac Walton League Chamber of Commerce, or similar public or quasi-public activity for religious civic culturally, civic education or cultural purpose, and signs drawing attention to public parking lots, restrooms, or to other public convenience relating to such places or activities are permissible and do not require permits. Goes on to say that such signs shall not exceed six square feet and shall, signs shall not be illuminated, so contain no advertising matter and be combined where possible. And it goes on to state, nothing contained hereon shall be construed as to limit the section of, limit the effect of Section 706.03-14. And I added that section in the bottom of y'all's page as well. That deals with grand non-conforming signs and treating as non-conforming signage. So that's exactly how we treated this sign to begin with. As far as the original sign here on the left, we were, it was considered a non-conforming off-premise directional signage under that section of code. The picture on the left was the original signage. The drawing on the right is the proposed signage. The proposed signage is to be the same size and the same location of the sign that was removed. Previous signage included place cards for the Quanis Club, Odd Fellows Club, Rogary Club, Alliance Club, Sons of the Confederate Veterans, Knights of Columbus, Mountain City Masonic Lodge, Women's, excuse me, Lexington Women's Club, and the General Federation of Women's Clubs. The proposed signage includes 12 area for 12 qualifying clubs slash organizations. At presence, the Sons of the Confederate Veterans, Daughters of the American Revolution, Mountain City Masonic Lodge, Daughters, excuse me, United Daughters of the Confederacy, the Care Box Project, the Lexington Moose Lodge 1700, and the Miller House Museum have committed to installing the signage and placing placards pendants on the proposed welcome to signage. And you may also notice, worth noting, that rather than welcome to historic Lexington, as the previous sign said, the proposed sign says, welcome to our historic area, community civic organizations. With that being said, I can leave this on the screen. Well, what I'll do is I'll stop sharing for now. Turn the floor over to Mr. Dorsey and Ms. Mary Harvey Hafis and can bring that back up if needed.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Everybody. Mary Harvey Hallseth, 27 Florence, Sarah Lane. I am now a resident of the county since April of this year. So far, I really like it. My history with this sign goes back to when I was serving on the Planning Commission for the City of Lexington, and I was directed by the mayor at that time to work with Mrs. Helen Pearson of the Women's Club to redo the sign. The paint was fading. There was rotten wood. There was no landscaping. It was pretty ugly underneath. And she and I worked to get the organizations to give the money to redo the sign. We had the, I don't remember if it was Blue Ridge or Lexington Garden Club that did plantings underneath. And it came about that it was redone about '08 or '09. And then when I served on City Council, again, I had conversations with Lexington Public Works. Mike Kennedy was in charge of Public Works at the time, and they took over the care of the landscaping because at that point, the garden club members had aged and were having a hard time getting up and down the hill. I'm also a member of a couple of service organizations in the area and would be proud to display the emblem of my clubs. I'm very active with the Miller House Museum also, just as a volunteer. And I think you all needed to know how this would be administered. And what we would do is have a committee formed from one person from each service organization. It's a $300 fee to put your emblem on, which include, which would help build, paint, and do all the, do all the upkeep at that point. Once the six are up, then of course, other organizations can step up and we can put theirs on. One thing that I wanted to point out, they're all the same size. Nobody's bigger than the other, which I think is pretty important. Do you have any questions for me or?
Is that $300 fee, one-time, annual? What is it?
It's, it's a one-time fee, and then that committee can decide in the future if they need to have the organizations give any more money. So at this point, we're just asking for 300 upfront from each organization, and then the committee will decide.
Who would actually own the sign?
If you go speak, you need to step up so it can be on the microphone. I'm sorry.
I want you to draw a blank, but it would be owned jointly by the clubs that pay the initial fee to join it and who also would continue to pay any future maintenance fees that may be assessed, so.
And those same members would determine who could be on it?
Well, each, each club obviously will appoint a representative. We built into the resolution which types of organizations are in the proposed resolution, which types of organizations would be allowed on the club to be service clubs and the community centers. Definition in the county code is a little odd in that it doesn't specifically lay out civic clubs. It names a few clubs. It's language is a little awkward, but basically civic clubs fall under service clubs. It wouldn't be open to business, you know, commercial business or anything like that. So the, the two categories listed in, in that resolution would be allowed as long as they meet that definition to the county.
Of civic or nonprofit?
They have to be civic. Actually, there's no restriction in the county code. Specifically says nonprofit under the definition of service clubs. We certainly don't know offhand. I don't have any of this, any service clubs that are for profit. I couldn't say that that would never come up as an issue, but as far as I know, every civic or service organization I know of is nonprofit in nature by, you know, this is the typical nature of it.
Who defines the definition of civic?
It's actually service club, and it's going to be defined as, talking with county officials, there's no definition in the code specifically, so it's going to fall back onto the common dictionary definition, which I believe was included in, which actually, if you pull up your Webster's, it's defined as a club of business or professional men or women organized for their common benefit and activity and community service.
That is correct. So since the definition, this chapter of definitions in the Rockbridge County Code states that if it's not defined in the, in the definition section, that you shall use the ordinary and customary definition. So we lean, we go back to Webster's dictionary. That's verbatim what Webster says. So, so one, and that's again why I handed this out. It's easier for me to follow how, what qualifying clubs or service clubs are in there. And, and Brandon is also correct. It does not say civic organizations. The one we've been leaning towards with most of the applicable ones we've been utilizing is the service club under Section 2F.
We also added into the, the resolution, the YMCA and 4-H. They were specifically named individually for whatever reasons, you know, 4-H Club. You know, it's pretty typical in a lot of these civic organization signs, the 4-H clubs are on them. We don't know, I don't know that we approach them, but we certainly want to exclude them since they were individually listed, so.
Mary. Who owned the previous sign that was removed?
I do not know. When it was established in the 1980s, and I did not live here at the time, the tourism department was integral in having it made and put up. And whether the tourism department at that time was set up as it is now, where it's County, Buena Vista, and Lexington, I don't know.
Individual clubs paid for the restoration. Sorry, assertion was rebuilt sign was owned by the individual clubs, but actually, I think that sign, the kind of iteration that it is now goes back to the 80s, but there was a sign of some nature like that going back to the 1930s from my research.
Dorsey, you've referenced a resolution several times. Do I have, do we have that?
No, you do not. I thought it might be premature. I apologize. I'm contemplating inserting that. Staff had some preliminary comments on the, on the resolution, so that was not included. I can certainly get that to y'all.
Who prepared the resolution?
I believe Brandon, yeah.
When I hear that, I'm thinking.
Yeah, it's a recommended resolution.
I see.
We've worked with Mr. Trout from BDOT because he was the first person that we met, and he recommended the resolution.
I was just wondering if that resolution answered some of the questions that were being asked as to the, the, the process for approval, requesting approval, and then how it gets approved.
It, it does. It details that each club will have a member on their committee, and it details the, if you don't mind, I'll read the, what we propose.
Sure. Let's hear that.
Whereas Rockbridge County Code 706.03-15 regulates the installation of off-premise informational signs of a public or quasi-public nature for civic educational and cultural purposes, among others. And whereas seven local organizations have requested to install and maintain a civic welcome sign on the Virginia Department of Transportation hereafter, BDOT right-of-way for US Route 11 North Lee Highway across from the College Square Shopping Center. These organizations include the Mount City Masonic Lodge, Care Box Program, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Sons of Confederate Veterans, United Daughters of the Confederacy, the Moose Lodge 1700, and the Miller House Museum. And whereas the construction and maintenance of a civic welcome sign is permissible via VDOT regulations and Virginia Administrative Code 24VAC30-151-570, provided that the locality in which said sign is constructed adopts an authorizing resolution signed by the Chief Executive Officer of the local government body denoting who is authorized to construct and maintain said sign. And whereas National Civic League notes that where there is inclusive civic engagement, which everyone has a place at the table to define, direct, and implement public services and amenities, there is greater civic pride and responsibility, which then lead to sustained community well-being. Now, therefore, the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize a civic welcome sign committee to construct and perpetually maintain a civic welcome sign for the purpose of displaying their individual organizational logos or signs jointly. And that said civic welcome sign committee hereafter committee will be comprised of a member appointed by each of the initial applicant organizations, which pay an initial assessment of $300 into the funds of said committee and a representative of any future applicant organizations, which the committee accepts under the definition of a, one, a service club, two, a community center, three, 4-H, or four YMCA is defined in the Rockbridge County Code 706.03-15, and pays such fees at the time assessed by said committee. The committee shall elect a chairperson who will serve as a liaison with the Board of Supervisors, county officials, and BDOT. As you said, civic welcome sign committee comply with the relevant Rockbridge County Codes and BDOT regulations concerning the construction and maintenance of said sign.
But the location of the sign is welcoming, welcoming people into Lexington, correct?
The sign does not say Lexington. It is in the county.
But you're heading towards Lexington as you see the sign, correct?
Can be, yep. Unless you stay on the bike.
Almost all the.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
The majority of all clubs meet in the Lexington area. Yourself at the seat of governor, sitting in the middle of the city of Lexington, all, the Moose Lodge is in the county, but it's one mile out of the city limits. Everybody would consider that the Lexington area. We meet in the north end of, at the BFW Building. We're one mile east of the city. Most of the activity in the county and service organizations are going to center in this area for good or for ill. Our sheriff is the sheriff of Lexington and Rockbridge County. This is sort of the heart and soul area that most of the clubs, you know, meet in this area, other than, say, the rural towns.
How big is the right-of-way?
How, how wide is it? I'm uncertain. I mean, it's, it's gotta be 100 feet plus easily. This is definitely, it's been confirmed that this is in the BDOT right-of-way.
Right, but I'm saying how much room, because if we get the grant to run the sidewalk all the way down like we proposed, is this gonna be right in the middle of the sidewalk?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's, it's gonna be.
Yes, there's a significant, well, there, there is a grade. I won't, no definite significant or not, but there's a relatively good grade, and this is on top of, on top of the grade, if you will. I'd say a minimum five feet above Route 11.
It's at least, it's at least 30 feet off the pavement.
Yep. And the current, current rendition says, welcome to our historic area, local civic and historical societies.
BDOT regulations. This basically comes, BDOT is basically giving us approval to do this, but they're required to have approval from the county to allow it to happen. BDOT codes allow for these type of signage every two miles. We're asking for one sign in one location. The BDOT regulations would allow civic organizational joint welcome to signs every two miles in every community in the county. But, you know, this is the historic area where these logos have been displayed. It's a traditional area that seems to make sense, given that most of the clubs meet in this vicinity for that to be where they would go back.
The original sign, who took it down? City of Lexington?
Yes.
Do we know why they took it down?
There have been statements made, but we do not know why. There were different organizations that were integral in making that decision.
And I realize it's in the county. Have you had any discussions with the City of Lexington?
They have. They have no authority in the matter. By BDOT regulation, the locality where the sign is is that is author, authorizing entity. The city, city has no authority as far as BDOT is concerned to authorize or unauthorize any sign in the county.
The sign that was removed, the organizations that were on there, had they paid a fee? Has paid anybody to, who did they pay?
As I recall, it was.
It was funneled through the Women's.
I think the Women's Club sort of chaired that organization. They basically oversaw. I have a, a listing of all the organizations and everyone involved in, in that. What the claim was, that the claim was that the garden club owned it outright, and they gave it to Main Street Lexington. We disagreed with that and said, no, we, we were vested, we financially invested in the sign as well as the other clubs. They're one club, you know, they're welcome to remove their logo from the sign if they no longer want, no longer want to help with the maintenance of it. And that's how the city made the decision to, that they should take it down. I have no idea.
I, I don't want to start an argument or seem to be so objective, but looks to me like y'all should have went back to the city and ask that question.
Well, it's a moot point at this point because according to Mr. Trout, to re-erect the sign now, he cannot find, and due to the age of the sign or whatever, he cannot find a resolution from the county 12, 14, 15 years ago authorizing it. Since he can't find that resolution, if that resolution were found or existed, we didn't do an extensive research for it. If that resolution existed, he said it may not exist from that time. You know, this sign is so old that it may predate that process, but in order to re-erect it regardless, we have to have a, a resolution to count. The city, any action they would take on it would not be acceptable to, to BDOT.
If you're asking Mr. Day that was, was there any conversation with anyone in the city? Yes, I spoke to Frank Friedman when it was taken down and found that he didn't really care about the sign being there. He knew it was in disrepair. And at that point is when we approached Mr. Trout to say, who do we go to? What do we do? How do we do this? And because it's in the county, that's why we are here with you all. The property exists in the county and is owned by BDOT. So there's two organizations that we have to have a nod from. We've already had the nod from BDOT, and now we need the nod from you. And that's why we're here.
And in, in order for any future civic service organizations to be on the sign, they have to have a physical presence and meet here. It can be an outside agency from somewhere else or something.
In Rockbridge County. And you'll notice, you probably remember the one that as you go into Buena Vista, it's, it's a welcome sign. It's got some sort of service organization emblems, but they also have a fence on the side of it, and there's emblems on that fence. So their response to adding organizations was to build the fence and then put the emblems on that fence. This has room for 12.
So the, the proposal is the initial civic groups here are chipping in and setting up a committee. As, as, so some, a new organization comes and applies.
Yes.
So who, who says they meet the criteria and the criteria are the county code criteria?
That count, that committee.
Which then would come back to, to, to us in a, in a fashion.
Yes.
So that's the ultimate interpretation of Mr. Webster's definition.
Yes.
And, and would that new club then become part of the committee, I assume?
One person from that club would be appointed to the committee. Yes. So every organization has a person representing that's on the committee. Every organization that has an emblem on that sign will have a member on the committee.
So if you have an organization that applies and is turned down, what recourse does that organization have?
They could probably come to you. I had a request from a church, and I had to go back and ask what, what is the, what is this sign about? And Mr. Trout said that there are regulations for churches that have their own separate regulations. So I had to go back to that person and say, no, this is a service organization, not a church. You have a, a separate code that covers you. So if you want to put a sign up, you need to talk to Mr. Trout.
And that would be under, just to interject, that would be under the same section of code that, that we're dealing with this evening. I will say, I'm fairly confident there've been other church organizations that's erected signage in the BDOT right-of-way, and I'm uncertain if, if, if we were required to do a formal resolution, but that could very well be just pertaining to this administrative code. You know, obviously, we're dealing with welcome. uh, this administrative code. You know, obviously we're dealing with welcome to signs now.
When Mr. Trout churches have broad ability to put up signage that other organizations don't.
And there's some in this area, uh, there, there are some church signs in this area, uh, further up Route 11. There's several of them.
And there's one on sixty coming in town.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
I just have a couple of comments. For some reason, I get the feeling that you wanna leave out Lexington intentionally, because you give a such a vague answer whenever we bring up the city of Lexington. Uh, we work hand in hand with the city on a lot of things and I, I think it would be important for us as a board to, to reach out to our, to the council of Lexington and get their opinion on this too. You can say what you want. We're welcome to the, our historic area. You're welcoming to Lexington, because unless you turn, when you get to the middle of the bridge, that's Lexington. Most people don't refer to Rockbridge County from the outside. If you live, I live in Rockbridge County, people say, where are you from? Lexington. My mailing address says Lexington. Uh, and I just wanna make sure we're not snubbing anybody or, or trying to get even because just sign got taken down. And I might be totally off guard, but I just don't think everybody's, I don't think the air is being cleared here. I think we, we wanna sign with these organizations. There's some hard feelings against the city of Lexington because the sign came down and we're trying to avoid that discussion. So I, I just think the discussion needs to continue between us and our counterparts in the city.
Toward, towards your comment, the, uh, we were advised by B dot not to put Lexington on this sign because again, the authorizing locality is county.
Exactly, but that doesn't mean the name can't go on our sign. It was on our sign.
They would, if Lexington would like the name on the sign, I, I don't have, we don't have a bit of problem with that at all.
I'm just saying, we need to have that discussion with our counterparts.
We wouldn't object if Lexington would want to be noted on the sign, but.
I, I think because it actually, you're leading into Lexington, it's clearly a welcome sign to Lexington. Or as you say, Lexington is the heart of our community, at least that, that area. So we're welcoming them into Lexington. If Lexington doesn't want to be a part of that sign, that to me, they would need to want that sign to welcome them into our community because of where that sign is located. It is in the county, but it's clearly leading into the city of Lexington.
What do you say to all the service clubs that are in the county in the vicinity of Lexington? This, I mean, if Lexington says, no, we don't want this sign, what recourse does that leave the uh, clubs and institutions that, that meet or in the county that are in this vicinity?
I, I, I think what what Mr. Lyons was saying is it, it's not a request or a requirement that the city say yes. It's just that by being partners and, and local governments that are neighbors need to have a discussion with them. A, a ultimately, as you pointed out, it's in the county, it's the county board supervisor's decision. But before that decision's made, have at least a conversation with them and, and get their input.
Would you like us to have that conversation? Because I'm more than happy to call Frank and sit with him.
Well, I think we, it's, we need to have the conversation with them. I mean, you're welcome. I'm saying, not saying you can't.
That's fine. I talk to Frank all the time. I don't want to talk to Frank. I just didn't know what direction you wanted to go. Was it us or you all?
I, I will also say that, you know, twice we've heard that the, the sign has fallen into disrepair. Last time it was falling in disrepair, it was taken down. The last thing, especially as you point out that signs can happen every two miles. I think being in the business of doing welcome signs and then for having the care and maintenance fall on the localities to not only maintain these, come up with the money or track down the organizations to take care of these signs, that is a big, huge obligation on, on the county or in any locality. I don't think, quite honestly, that three hundred dollars goes a whole long way to not only maintaining a sign, but taking care of it year after year and landscaping it and doing the things that need to be done. So I do, you know, caution you to make sure that, that that stuff, so it doesn't end up becoming somebody else's problem, some locality's problem, you know, to take care of that.
The committee itself will be formed to oversee the building of it and, and the maintenance of it. If that fee is not enough, that committee's gonna have to go back to the organizations and say, we need.
And, and it was three hundred per organization, right?
Per organization.
And I would say that to that firstly, uh, we have a contractor that's wanna do build this for free, it's a pro material. And secondly, uh, as far as the condition of the sign, uh, Chris wanted to throw the picture back up. The sign itself was not in disrepair. The only sign, only thing on it in disrepair were two of the club logos. The, uh, the Masons needed to have theirs, uh, some definitely some work done on theirs and the, the garden clubs was in, was peeling. And they, again, were the ones that wanted to discontinue their uh association and maintenance of the sign. So, but the reigning club logos were still in fairly good shape. And so far as the main sign itself, it was rock solid.
Do you know the date that this picture was taken that you just referred to?
I believe I supplied that picture. It was probably taken a couple of months prior to its removal. So it would have been January or February twenty twenty one.
I, I think the picture I utilize in, uh, in the presentation was provided for Brandon, but I have several many pictures that I can provide the exact date if needed.
In fact, by the time it had been taken down, the, uh, the sign had been, uh, cleaned and repainted. Uh, it was in better shape than it was even in that photo.
This committee that will be in charge of, of the sign. Uh, let's say you have the sign, organizations go on it, a, as we know in this day and time, a lot of people get offended by things. If we have a citizen come complain to us about the sign, who, how do we refer them to the committee or who, who should they come talk to? Or will you have regular scheduled meetings? I mean, how, how will that process work? If, to hear a complaint from a citizen and then how would it work to determine whether the, the placard in question will stay or be removed?
The committee will be formed exactly like any other entity. They will have to have bylaws. They will have to have a chair. They will have to have a vice chair, a treasurer and secretary, and they will have to have regular meetings. So that is not formed yet. But like any other committee in the area, it will have to have that parameter. So if somebody has an issue, they can be referred to the chair and the chair can bring that to the committee. A person is certainly welcome to come speak to the committee.
Would it be possible to have a small plaque or something on that sign erected by and contact information on that?
Could. We could.
The committee's chairperson will always be given to Chris or his successor so that they will know who that chairperson is to contact for this committee. So they need, they contact the county, you can always refer them back to the committee.
Chris, the ultimate responsibility for the sign, let's just say, does it fall to the county or to B dot?
You're talking about the?
The ultimate, like if everybody walks away and whatever, it, it, who's the ultimate, who ultimately owns the sign just by?
I don't think I can answer who ultimately owns the sign, but I do know in other, other similar processes with other B dot signage, we have a memorandum of understanding. Is that correct, Ms. Huffman? Or what's the title of the, the per, per maintenance? So explain to maintains the sign.
We did a draft sign maintenance agreement.
Okay, so that, that would be, uh, the, that, the maintenance would be taken care of through that, the sign maintenance, not ordinance by any means, but agreement, I guess.
And I think to answer your question, it's B dot. It's on B dot land.
Right, so if the forgive me, but if, if, if somebody, if, if we can't get a hold of anybody and the sign becomes, you know, in, in issue, I just wanna know who ultimately owns the sign because it, I don't think it really, I, I think it's owned by the person that owns the property and it's unclear to me that I, I suppose that that's B dot, but it, it doesn't sound like B dot actually makes any of the decisions about these things, that they lay it back on the county to make those decisions.
Regulations say that if the sign were to fall in disrepair, would become unsafe, they would remove it.
Unfortunately, the track record on that is when it came, when it was already in disrepair, everybody went like this, you know, somebody else's responsibility to take care of it.
And that's where there, there was no um, final or formal agreement on that sign. And this is, this would be a formal agreement. But I, I understand what you're saying, which is why I was charged when I was on planning commission. You know, why would planning commission have anything to do with that sign? A city planning commission, commissioner, working on a sign that's in the county that had been there for decades and decades. So yes, I understand what you're saying. It was very nebulous. This would absolutely lay out who's in charge, who's responsible, who would have ownership and membership.
Any other questions, comments from board? Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, thank you for coming meeting with us and uh, if, I'm sure, does Mr. Flayton have both y'all's contact information in case we should have any further questions? Yeah, okay. And, and we'll do some due diligence on our part. We'll be back in touch with you, okay?
Thanks again.
Thank you. Hope you have a good evening. Want to end, end the work session, have a break?
Uh, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, work session is now completed and we will reconvene our regular meeting at five thirty.
I'll do a quick roll call vote. Supervisor Lewis. Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Ayers.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
And Supervisor McDaniel is present as well. We will now ho- have a prayer for the board followed by a pledge of allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray for guidance and wisdom as we begin this meeting. Let us listen carefully to each other and be respectful of all viewpoints. Let all that is done here tonight be done with honesty and integrity and in the best interests of the citizens of Rockbridge County.
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. The webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press raise your hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Let's see here. Is there any changes to the agenda tonight, Mr. Sutter?
Uh, need to add an appointment to the Roward Board of Directors or consideration of appointment of Roward Board of Directors under appointments.
Do I add that as fifteen or? Under the appointment section. All right. Uh, are there any recognitions or presentations for the board tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Citizen comments. At this time, we will open, uh, open up for citizen comments. Please address the board by standing at the kiosk up front and state your name and magistrate district and try to limit your comment to three minutes. Is there anyone signed up willing or signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Uh, the first person is Jan Lowry.
Okay, Ms. Lowry.
Good evening, Jan Lowry, Curse Creek. Just briefly, I won't even take the three minutes. I just want you all to really, really, really reconsider the closing of Goshen Library. I realize that it's a library board decision, but they get their money from you and you get your money from us. So please be good stewards of our money and make sure it's distributed equitably throughout the whole county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Is there anyone else I know?
Oh, yes, sir. We have a Steve Hart.
Good evening, Mr. Hart.
Steve Hart, Curse Creek, but you know that and probably think I love coming here to speak because I seem to do it a lot. I never, I'd rather never have to speak here again, but feel obliged to because this is my home and I care enough about it to do things I don't like to do. You know, I have a farm and work as a lead carpenter for one of our local construction companies. A job that is available to any one of our high school graduates four or five years after graduation. It's a good job that pays well, but it's hard to live here on that salary. My vehicle tax this year is four percent of my annual pay. Our youngest vehicle is six years old and the only vehicles I have are those required for the operation of our family and our farm. There are no motorized toys. By the time the feds, the social security administration, the Commonwealth and the county get done with my paycheck, there's not that much left. Now, I'm fortunate enough to have my army retirement pay to help out, but what if my wife and I died tonight? My children have similar jobs to mine, some self-employed, some working for other trades or contractors. Could my children continue to pay the vehicle and land taxes required on their paychecks? I can't say that it's impossible, but I am not confident that it is possible. I'm not here to complain about taxes, but to share my concerns on how those taxes are shaping or perhaps misshaping our community. I've heard you discuss the need for housing studies so we can figure out how to house workers for some future unspecified big industry so we can use this to expand our tax base. Before we try to attack more jobs, we need to figure out how to fill the empty ones we already have. Every contractor and tradesman I know is looking to hire. Everyone says they can't find help. I've talked to two homeowners this week who've had to go outside the county to hire building trades. Some contractors are not taking work at this time because of the backlog. We have jobs, good jobs with good wages that are necessary for the function of our, our community, but we don't have the people to fill them. Why not? The combined effect of land costs and tax costs disassociated with the local wage structure and the revenue generating capacity of the land drives people away. At least that's my personal and family observation and everyone I talk with seems to agree. We have a ready-made workforce here, our children. However, too many of them leave and never return because they're displaced by folks who moved to the country for a few years before moving to a retirement community. Stewardship of land and communities is a generational activity. It spans decades and centuries. I'm not saying we should ban immigration into the county. I am saying that as you develop the next comprehensive plan, tax structure, land transfer, family economic cooperation for folks raising families, operating farms and businesses and doing the hard work of sustaining our communities needs to be of primary concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who didn't sign up that wants you to address the board? Okay. Is there anyone online wishing to address the board?
I don't believe so.
There were, are there any written comments that need to be written to the record?
I have none.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have approval of the August twenty-second minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I, I did my, my statement isn't exactly what I felt I said at the time regarding the body grant and the, more specifically, the ARPA funds. My statement was to say I felt it was a good use of the federal funds or as they would be leveraged towards getting a, a universal broadband throughout the county. Not just that it would be a good use of the federal funds. It's that it's a good use because they're being leveraged. So we're getting at least more than twice, you know, wha- what we received if we use them in this way.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes, uh, with the understanding of what Mr. Lewis just spoke of with his change on that?
So moved.
And a second? All right. Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next, we have the county financial package. Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. Uh, for this, uh, for the month of August, the total, um, county bills amounts to two million, two hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-two cents. As fiscal agent, one hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for a total of two million, four hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-seven and seventy-one cents. Uh, we are also on track. Seventeen percent approximately of the year has passed and we're right on track to seventeen percent of our budget. There's also, uh, two appropriations, uh, included in the resolution for your consideration. That ARPA tourism, that's separate from the ARPA fund. That was a whole separate tourism grant that, um, we, uh, received from VTC and it goes towards our tourism program. That's all I have.
Are there any questions, uh, from Mr. Harrison? Comments about the bills? If not, is there a motion to, to approve as presented? And second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have discussion on extension of personal property tax due date. Ms. Huffman, I believe you're going to lead us on that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The background on this is that during the budget, budget season, you'll all recall that you, uh, became aware that the values for certain types of taxable vehicles were increasing significantly. And the best estimates were that the values were going up by twelve to thirteen percent. In the course of evaluating, um, the impact on citizens, uh, related to their personal property, the board was exploring ways to try and equalize those increases, at least to the extent possible, given the type of across-the-board application with, um, with tax rates. But eventually the board set the tax rate, um, for this classification of property, um, at a re- at an amount that was, at a rate that was reduced by sixteen percent. And that equaled to three dollars and eighty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. And that equaled to three dollars and eighty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, sixteen percent being quite a bit or a fair amount more than the anticipated increases. Despite these efforts, the assessments, um, have remained half for, um, have remained higher this year than in previous years. Citizens have been contacting board members with concerns. Chairman McDaniel had requested a discussion on granting an extension of the due date to be included on the agenda. You have a draft resolution attached in case you want to take action tonight. Um, the board has the authority to extend the due date for ninety days, no more than ninety days, um, for the, uh, personal property tax payment. The date, uh, you've been presented with is November ninth as a possible due date to allow additional time, but still being several weeks before the real estate tax date. Uh, Treasurer Ms. Torado has suggested that maybe a more workable, uh, due date would be November seventh if the board wishes to adopt this action. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, at the, um, during the budget season, you know, we, we got the information, uh, as you stated, you know, somewhere in the twelve to thirteen percent range. It was never intended to equalize the in等ization. It was intended to try to reduce the impact on our citizens by the rate reduction. It was, uh, and that, you know, some people's vehicles have gone up a considerable amount, some have gone down, some have stayed about the same. Or they're, you know, that, that retail value, retail loan value is driven off of whatever the vehicle is valued at as of January first. That's by state code. That's, that's how, uh, Commissioner is supposed to tax the vehicle. So the Board of Supervisors has no control over what the value of your vehicle is. That's just what the market value is driven at. However, in my conversations with, with several citizens, I understand that it's a, it's an impact. It, it's hard. Everything has gone up, uh, your groceries, your gas, everything. And, um, that's why I asked Ms. Huffman if we could look at extending the due date from October fifth to allow people a little more time to try to budget in to pay the personal property taxes rather than basically thirty days. It would be more like sixty days and maybe a few more paychecks that, that they could budget to pay that to help with it. Is there any questions, comments?
Well, my big concern is when you extend the, the date thirty days to, so you're going to be in November. Probably before they even pay their personal property tax, their real estate tax is going to show up in their mailbox. Uh, and so, you know, then their real estate taxes do at beginning of December and, you know, then you're right there in the holiday season and it's going to be a crunch. Um, while I'm not dead against giving people a little more time, I, I would like to see maybe in, in the future if it's possible to get the bills out a, a little earlier. Uh, you know, um, you know, that way, uh, they, you know, you, this year I've talked to people and we, we reduced the amount a- and then they, you know, their cars went up value more than they paid for them. So I, I, I don't know when it's ever going to end, but, um, I would hope that maybe we could, you know, get the bills out maybe at forty-five days before they do rather than, you know, thirty or so. I don't know what kind of hardship that would be on the treasurer's office.
Well, the other, the other option also, I know we've discussed in the past, uh, not, and this is certainly not, nothing that we can bring up tonight, but maybe the finance committee can have discussions with the treasurer and commissioner's office and, and county attorney about, you know, we bill personal property on an annual basis. Maybe, maybe we should be looking at semi-annual billing twice a year to split the bill up a little bit to make it a little, little easier on citizens. I'm not sure that's the right answer. I'm not sure that that's, um, you know, I, I don't know all the implications that go along with that, but perhaps the finance committee could review that and then bring back recommendations to the full board about what the best route would be.
Yeah, I don't know about this since I don't sit on the finance committee, but is there any way to waive the fine if it's not paid by November se- I mean, that there wouldn't be a fine if it, if they were one month late or sixty days late? No, no way to do that. The only way to do it is to postpone the due, due date.
And, uh, Chairman, we, the finance committee had, had a meeting today, you know, that many things, and we did begin those discussions. So we, we will bring back some, some thoughts. Uh, initial one was, as Dr. Lyons said, see about getting the bills out a little earlier. But that was as far as we got today.
And I, I believe if I'm correct, November eighth is election day. Is, is, will the building be closed at? All right. So it, it wouldn't be a good idea to have them, you know, if citizens are trying to come by and they can't even get in the building. So, um, I agree that it would probably be better to move it to either the seventh or, or a later date, but to your point, Mr. Lyons, you start moving it out further and further, you get into when the real estate taxes are due as well. So, is there a recommendation or a motion to, to do anything with this or to leave it as is?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why is it the late penalty cannot be waived?
So due date, he goes on the following day. So if, if you're going to move the due date to November seventh, penalty goes on the following day.
So in essence, by moving it out, we have waived the, uh,
And that would be why I would indicate that because some, some of, they have, they're, they're looking at a bill that they probably didn't expect for some families considerably larger. Um, and I think, um, not giving them more time to come up with budgeting is what we probably need to do.
I, I agree with, you know, Dr. Lyons of concerning that everything's showing up at once, but it would allow some flexibility for folks to either go ahead and, and take care of it or, uh, figure out a plan to, to take care of it all, just all at the same time. It does give some extra time for that.
Yeah, I just, if, if we do that, there needs to be a reminder that this is just affecting your personal property, that your real estate taxes are, you know, are coming and they're coming that
the same time they always do.
Yeah, just, just like the personal property came the same time it always did. However, it, it was a shock, you know? It'd make you want to sell your car, but that you couldn't buy a new one for what? It's, it's just gotten out of, out of hand.
I, I don't, I'm not sensing any great reticence to not do it. Uh, I, I think, like I said, it just makes some flexibility and it's, it's a, it's a one-time, hopefully one-time unique situation that we're in. It, it seemed to make some sense to me.
Well, typically vehicles depreciate in value. Unfortunately, for the last year, year and a half, two years, vehicles have been appreciating in value, which is not the norm. And hopefully, you know, that will reverse and then go back to the way it should be with vehicles depreciating.
So Ms. Huffman, I assume we can make a motion to, with, uh, an amended resolution?
You may. You can actually, uh, just fill in whatever date you prefer. I assume November seventh and, um, go with that to take action on the proposed resolution.
How our citizens know about that? Are we? Yes.
I was ready to take the notice to the newspaper today.
Okay.
But I've postponed and you all might have a different idea at this point. So
Okay.
Hopefully, we can use that as part of it.
And when did a real estate tax notice go out? Usually.
Normally the end of October.
And they're due December fifth?
I move, we approved the resolution with amended to November seventh.
All right. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Lewis?
I.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, Mr. Suter, can we also get that plastered across our website as a change of due date?
Um, sure. Absolutely.
Maybe some signs up at the entrance.
And a reminder about real estate taxes.
You're sure.
Okay. Next up, we have, uh, further discussion on the library board specifically, I guess, uh, the Goshen, uh, library and Mr. Suter, Mr. Harrison, I'm not sure which one I will.
Well, I'll, I'll lead in very briefly. First thing I want to do is thank, uh, uh, Ashton, Vicki and Chris and everybody here for carrying my water. It's my first day back from vacation. So, um, um, didn't have as much to do with the formation of the agenda and the documents. But, uh, just to lead in and then I'll turn it over to Ashton. Uh, the last meeting, Board of Supervisors did ask staff to bring back the Goshen ba- library discussion back to you for discussion at this meeting. Um, and as I understand, uh, the, one of the main considerations the board wanted to discuss was essentially how, to ascertain how much savings were potential, uh, for, for not operating the Goshen libraries. Uh, and just for everyone in attendance, uh, the, the library board had determined, uh, to, um, leave Goshen in its current, uh, location by October fifteenth and, uh, potentially operate two days a week, uh, out of the community room at the firehouse or with the, um, uh, the, the bookmobile. And, uh, obviously there, there's some, should be some cost savings there. And, uh, Ashton has put together some numbers and I think he's got some new numbers, uh, just as of today as an update. So with that, unless there are questions of me, I will turn it over to Ashton.
Um, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Suter. Um, in your board packet, um, there was, uh, several things. One was the contract dated nineteen eighty, uh, between, uh, Rockbridge County and the Rockbridge Regional Library. There's a similar agreement, uh, they mirror each other with Bath County and bring them Bath County into it nineteen eighty-two. Um, then in two thousand nineteen, the agreement was, um, updated. And, uh, even though it hasn't been executed, that's the, uh, model, especially on the, uh, uh, billing side on what jurisdictions each, uh, contribute to. Uh, then, uh, I put in a copy of the, uh, twenty twenty-three budget request, which was funded in full by the Board of Supervisors. And then there was a, uh, profit and loss statement for the period of July and August of twenty twenty-two for the Goshen Library. I passed out and had asked for a little bit more information on that and that was provided this morning. Now, uh, those are the numbers before you, that just dropped off. Um, they had taken on the revenue side off the, uh, state funding that they've received and then they've, uh, shown in more detail the, uh, system expenses that are, um, the umbrella expenses that covers, uh, the management of all five, uh, branch libraries. So the, uh, they showed those numbers. So in short, uh, what they, the local share on a monthly basis, uh, because Rockbridge contributes currently out of all the jurisdictions, uh, contributes fifty-five percent of the total system cost. Uh, that's because we're the largest population of all the jurisdictions. It's based on the, uh, latest population numbers from the Weldon Cooper Center. So, uh, in a nutshell, um, our, our share of the Goshen Library, uh, it would be a reduction of seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
That was per month, correct?
That is per month, yes, sir.
And, and that's, that's based on their financials. That's not something we necessarily independently verify.
Uh, that's correct.
And the library agreement twenty nineteen was not executed because the library board never executed it.
The, yes, I don't know if, uh, did the other just, I don't know also if the other jurisdictions.
We, all, all jurisdictions adopted or, or passed a resolution approving that agreement. The issue was, is that there was an exhibit in that agreement in order to make it official, uh, was actually the Goshen library, or Goshen library lease. Uh, since a lease was never executed, the agreement is technically not official because it's incomplete. Um, that, that lease was never, was never done. So that is a functioning part of that agreement. The three loc- or the four localities did approve that agreement. So in anticipation of the lease being done, we have been funding in good faith, I guess you will, or we've been funding from the model set up in that two thousand nineteen agreement ever since.
The, it's not too dissimilar. It's, uh, actually the twenty nineteen agreement's lot. Um, I think Rockbridge took the lead on drafting that, I recall, right? Um, the, it is better worded. Um, the nineteen eighty agreement does have some, talks about some cost shares as well. Namely, the branch here in Lexington being shared specifically, specifically between Lexington and Rockbridge. And then on a more general basis, that doesn't specify the other branches, but it does talk about sharing costs based on population.
So why, and I'm not sure this has been asked, but if the library is currently operating in a facility, let's set aside for being a library. I know it's other stuff, but it's a library. Why would you move out of that and all of a sudden decide to operate two days a week in a fire station parking lot?
Well, again, the, you know, I've, obviously I don't have, as I've reported in the past, I don't have anything in writing that was given to us about why, but I, I did specify the three reasons that were given, uh, were, were roof leak, mold, and which is associated, um, um, and patronage, declining patronage.
Okay. And we contacted the building owner and it, and we had an inspection done on the property and the mold was in a separate room, right?
Yeah, I can just give you quick and dirty on that. Uh, two meetings ago, the board asked me to commission a, uh, an inspection with an environmental contractor. Uh, the next morning, it was Tuesday morning, I contacted the owner because I need to get permission because we're not actually on a lease. We're just in there with the library, uh, as far as the locality goes. The lease, which is to complicate things more, is not valid because there, there really is no lease. Um, but the tenant was the library. So I called the owner, I asked for permission. Um, rather than giving me permission, he indicated that he would pay for personally the test and get it done. That way he's getting it done, no cost to county and we, we didn't have to go through the, what could have been a few-day procurement process getting close. So he got that done. As you recall, uh, I, we got the results basically middle of the day on Monday, two weeks later. Uh, and I was, I got permission from the owner to go view the document or go view and have a meeting with the, the environmental. Uh, and I was, I got permission from the owner to go view the document or go view and have a meeting with the, the environmental contractor. Uh, that it was in draft but not signed form. I needed to do that in order to make it to the board meeting to be able to report to you all. Uh, what I reported back was that, uh, the, the environmental tests generally came back fine. There was no, not an air quality issue. Uh, there was a little bit of, uh, there was some, some mold staining, I think is what it was referred to in some of the ceiling tile, not in the preschool area, but outside. Down the hall, I think in the conference room, um, and there was some evidence of, of, uh, previous water damage from a leak. Uh, but beyond that, the air quality was fine.
Okay, and the reduced usage, didn't they reduce the number of days they were open and hours they were open? I mean, if you're not open the same amount of time, it stands to reason that you're going to see a, a fewer people.
That is correct. My understanding from, and again, this is my recollection, um, my understanding, it went from, um, eight to seven, um, Monday through Friday with maybe a, a little, an hour off here or there. And then, um, uh, a significant amount of time on Saturday, most of the day on Saturday and then like four hour, four to six hours Sunday afternoon, five hours Sunday afternoon, maybe one to five or something. Uh, and that was reduced to, uh, closing at five o'clock, uh, so four days a week. I believe closed on Friday, if I'm not mistaken, and four hours on Saturday and no Sunday hours. I could be awful nose a little bit, but I don't think by all.
I believe the other branches were reduced hours as, as well.
Well.
Was this a COVID thing or was this just?
I. I'm not sure, but I, I certainly think it, that probably had an impact. I first came to you, I was unaware of the reduction in hours, which shame on me, I should have asked, but it would tend to make sense that if you reduce your hours, three hours in the evening after five o'clock, two or three hours in the evening and, um, and half a day on Saturday and no hours on Sunday, then yes.
And especially for schoolchildren. I mean, you know, I'm sure not many of them can get there by five o'clock, so the, the evening hours would have been more appropriate for them. And, you know, when, when we were doing the budget back in February, March and April, we were under conclusion that nothing had changed or was going to change and the library would be open. And that's the reason why we funded what we did. In my opinion, with, I mean, I'd prefer the library to stay open. I'd prefer it to stay there, but if the library board sees fit not to do it, then we need to adjust. The budget amount that we give the library board because with what we budgeted, we were expecting that operation to be open. And if it's not going to be, then we would need to reduce what we give to the library board, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Goshen needs a library. The, it, plain and simple, they need a library. And personally. I'm tired of discussing it when the people that have the answers can't give them to us because they're not here. And I think we need to have. At least two supervisors. Maybe the county administrator meet with the executive director. So we can get answers face to face and not have to worry about, did you get this letter? Did you get this letter? Did you get this letter? And if the reasons we've heard are accurate and we can fix them or already have fixed them, then we want a library. Plain and simple. And until we have that meeting and have that this face to face discussion. We should not pay a single penny. We should put that money in escrow and let's not have this drag out any longer.
We, we contribute monthly, do we not? I think we learned last session.
That's correct.
So if the day, if the date is October fifteenth of, of the, of the move out, then November one, uh, you know, if we haven't got it resolved by then, I, that might be a, a time to start that procedure, I would think would be reasonable. And, and also if I may, um, as the, we did just discuss that in the finance committee as to poor Dr. Lyons' suggestion. Uh, it, it might be good for the finance committee to have that meeting, as he said, to supervisors and certainly as it's in Walker's Creek District, I would like to be involved and as a member of the finance committee, it would make sense.
I'm more than happy to have finance committee handle that. And I, I agree, the library, I mean, we've been talking about this for two months, the library board should have a representative here to, to defend their position.
I mean, that's, that's the center of Goshen. You know, uh, what else can you take away from that town?
Well.
And, and have them stay in existence.
In, in addition, you adjust the library that, that, that building is housing other, uh, services, uh, and, and wonderful things for the town of Goshen. The, the women's club, you know, has a, has a closed, uh, drive there and decorates for Christmas. I mean, it's, it's just to, to Dan's point, it, it, it's a great focal point. And the library is certainly the, a big portion of that.
I was gonna.
I was just gonna say, be- before we go too much fur and forget, I will say that, uh, uh, Julie Goyette, the director, came into Ashton's office today to provide these additional numbers. And she did ask, she did ask us, she said, she, she was not opposed to coming tonight. And I said, well, I'm not sure this is the venue, so that's on me. As far as for, to get into a lengthy discussion, I knew we were going to have a, a, uh, a lot on the agenda tonight. And that was exactly what I was thinking, that, um, exactly what was suggested, that we get a couple of board members. Again, you've mentioned the finance committee and we get together and go ahead and do this. But I, I didn't want to let, let it be left unsaid that she did not. Want to appear improbable.
Well, we have a board, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Ayers, we have a board meeting coming up in two weeks. Can the finance committee meet with her within that time period and so potentially?
Hopefully at the Goshen Library.
Yeah.
So we can, I, I'd like to lay eyes on the problems.
And then, just to not say we haven't done anything, uh, the, the, I and the county administrator and the Goshen, uh, ca- council representative, you know, had, had met. Uh, with, uh, the director and some board members. Yeah, just.
But, but, you know, if we can get this, if, if y'all can make that happen within the next two weeks and then invite. Or highly recommend that the library have representation at our next meeting for other questions that may come up. Uh, again, I, I, I think what I'm sensing is everybody wants the library to remain open in Goshen. And it's not our call, but certainly if, if it fails to do so, we can take action to. I don't want to say punish, but I mean, you know, if, if we budgeted for a certain number of libraries and it's less than that, then, then we should reduce our.
And, and a certain number of hours.
Yeah.
In addition to.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm fine.
I, I will say too, and, and in the, the, um, recommendation there is to actually to renegotiate. A, a library agreement. We've got it, we've, we've got an old agreement, we've got a new agreement that's not technically in effect. And now we've got to change on that, that new agreement or the old, the new one that's technically not in fact two thousand nineteen does state Goshen Library. I mean, it's one of the primary libraries. So, and we've got three other partners. We've got Lexington, Buena Vista and Bath County that. Um, need to be considered as we're, because they've adopted, they have adopted quote unquote, the same agreement that is just technically not.
Did they have anything to say about this? Do they, just that, for instance?
And certainly you can work on, that you can work on the, the drafting a new agreement, but October fifteenth is rolling up pretty quick. So that, that's the main thing. We need to find a way to, to keep the library open.
And I, I would like to suggest that the county. Lease the building. Uh, let's take control of that, but let us be the people leasing the bu- building and sublease it. To the library, because right now our hands are tied because we're not, you know, I think we can do a better job of managing the building and working with the landlord. And, and get, getting things done.
But look forward to the recommendation from finance committee coming back. Anything else with the library?
Ashton, you have anything else?
No, no, is he? No.
Okay, all right. All right, at this time, we will move forward to the public hearing, um, Select Equine Properties LLC, Hundred Cross Country County Lane, Natural Bridge, Virginia. Application for special exception permit for campground and agriculture on general uses, A two zoning district. Mr. Sladen?
Yes, bear with me.
May I make a statement first?
Sure.
Um, and I, I'm just going to repeat the statement that I did last time this came up. I abstain from all matters, participation or discussion as county administrator. Related to the application of Select Equine Properties LLC and my disclosure statement required under Virginia Code two dot two, three, one, one, five F is on file with the clerk to the board supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is a, uh, special exception application. Uh, for Select Equine Properties LLC, uh, details of the property itself, uh, it's outlined in magenta here. Uh, located at one hundred cross country lane, natural bridge, Virginia, owned by Select Equine Properties LLC, further identified as tax map number ninety-seven dash fourteen dash A. And it consists of, uh, twenty-four point six two acres per tax records. It's located in and surrounded by the agricultural and general use districts. That would be the A two zoning district. As far as a special exception, uh, proposal itself, per section six oh three, excuse me, six oh two point oh three dash two of the county of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Campgrounds are used by special exception in the A two zoning district. Uh, per section six oh three point oh three dash fifteen of the regulations, campgrounds, uh, uh, excuse me. Three oh two point thirty-four of the regulations, campgrounds are defined as any plot of land, uh, ground used, maintained or held out to the public wholly or in part. As temporary accommodations of tents, expandable camp trailers, travel trailers, converted buses or trucks, or other such devices that may be de- uh, developed and marketed for camping. Whether privately or publicly owned and whether's use of such accommodations is granted for free of charge or for compensation. And Ju- June, uh, at the June meeting, the, uh, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of the special exception permit. Uh, application with the following conditions. Number one, substantial compliance with the site plan titled Select Equine Properties, uh, LLC Development Plan. Just to back up, that is this plan that's included in your, in your package there. Uh, campground is limited to two, uh, two-two or, uh, recreational vehicle camping spots. Number three, the use of generators is prohibited. Number four, guests are limited to three consecutive night stays. Number five, campground is limited to four vehicles and is not to exceed ten people. Uh, number six, the final, uh, draft condition is a, approval contingent upon, uh, final B dot. Fire of rescue, uh, uh, fire, rescue and emergency management, health department and building department approvals. Uh, the agenda item and the public hearing was scheduled for the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting. However, prior to the meeting, a Miss Tracy Robertson contacted the office of community development and stated that she was an equal fifty percent, uh, member of Select Wine, Equine Properties LLC. And was unaware of the pending application and at the time was opposed to the action, uh, opposed to that application, excuse me. Given the new revelations that the LLC included multiple members, the board postponed the agenda item, meaning that staff or the pres- uh, applicant made a presentation. We did not hold a public hearing and y'all did not take any action, uh, on the application. In order for the application to proceed, all members of the LLC were required to sign the application. Since that time, Miss, Miss Robertson has signed the application. Um, with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Rob Robertson to review any details of the project, uh, and I apologize, he actually has a, a PowerPoint presentation as well, so bear with me, I'll can pull that up. Uh, up and down arrows.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, good evening, members of, uh, the Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen, and thanks for, uh, hearing our application for a special, uh, use permit exemption. Um, I am Rob Robinson. I am, uh, the owner of, uh, Select Equine Properties, doing business as, uh, Stonebridge Equestrian Center. And we're here to request a, a limited overnight RV destination. I know you all call it a campground. I'm going to try to distinguish the difference between the two. Chris, where are your arrows? I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. So, um, for those not familiar with, uh, with this map, um, we are in the Buffalo Magisterial District. Um, outside of the frame in the upper right-hand corner is Halcyon Day Cideri. Uh, just to the lower, uh, right-hand corner, uh, would be, uh, pink Cadillac, just as a point of reference. Uh, we are, uh, one hundred cross country lane. Russ did this prior to our acquiring another ten acres just, uh, to the north of us. Uh, but we come up cross country lane, which we own, which we maintain, which we pay all the taxes on. And we make a right-hand turn, or the only right-hand turn that you can make. And then you travel down to our barn complex and we have two spots. Uh, one that parallels the Blue Ridge Mountains that people just love the view from there and the other that's perpendicular that, that gives, uh, folks the best view, um, of the, uh, horses. Oops. So, um, what, what we discovered last fall ironically, that, and actually it was something that, that I personally experienced. Um, in my corporate life, I used to travel all over by airplane. And I used to stay in hotels and resorts and stuff like that. Well, I wasn't going to do that, you know, during COVID. Uh, so I learned to go out and, uh, and jump in an RV and you could just about go anywhere you'd like and what a great way to, to, um, uh, travel around, experience the United States. So there's a niche market out there that was COVID-driven. Generally, these are very well-to-do owners of past A, B and C motorhomes, uh, large fifth wheels. Most of the folks that we've met are retirees. Or families just out, like I said, trying to, to see the United States. Um, they're looking for experiences other than crowded campgrounds. They're looking for nice quiet, uh, places. They love our horses. They love our farm. They love our views and what's not to love in beautiful Rock, Rockbridge County. Quiet, um, quiet place. So just to give you an example, here's, here's one shot, uh, from, uh, from our barn complex. Uh, and that view changes about every ten minutes. It's just a, a different view. Um, the fellow to the right is a retired corporate, uh, pilot. He now brokers aircraft and that is a Prevo. Um, um, motorhome, again, probably worth, worth more than what my house is worth. Um, folks come, uh, some in smaller units and really all they want to do is go hike the property and, and, and go hike in the Blue Ridge Mountains or, or go see all the beautiful things that, that Rockbridge County offers them. Um, we offer extended, um, hiking trails. All of them are, are manicured and groomed. Uh, what's, what we really benefit from tremendously was just an increase in lessons and, and, and an increase in what we call pony experience for children. Where we, we make sure that the horse can't get away, you know, where they're on a lead line and, and kids get to, get a chance to groom horses and feed them and, and get on them and, and walk around our, uh, our riding ring. So what is it we provide? Um, as, as you'll see, two spacious gravel, uh, surface areas. Uh, we've installed fifty amp service at both of those locations. Uh, we have a nice clean bathroom in our, in our barn. We have a washer dryer in there if, uh, folks need that. And, uh, in our wash stall area, we have a big, uh, sink that, uh, has, uh, hot and cold running water. Uh, so, um, we're, we're a community-minded company. Um, Spencer knows this because I'm out on Route eleven all the time between. Uh, as you can see there, there's the Shell Station all the way down to Fox Hunt Road and I pick up trash because I don't want it in my neighborhood. Um, so I do that several times, uh, a, a month. Uh, we promote businesses throughout what we call the corridor or the corridor, which is from, uh, Lexington South to Natural Bridge. Uh, I'll show you a little more on that in just a second. We require our guests to make, uh, a donation to Rockbridge Area Relief. And we're very proud of the fact that just this year alone, we've raised over three thousand dollars just in this. We're fully insured and, uh, we're licensed to do business. So this is a sheet that we hand out to each and every, uh, guest. Um, telling them what, what's available in, in the area, what to go see and we can, we can say it's not a huge impact on a daily business because you really only have two RVs. But in a week and in a month, you know, you're talking real money and, and everybody that, that, you know, of, of these businesses, hey, Rob, you know, we, uh, thank you for, for sending such and such over. We really appreciate that the increased business. Probably most important on this whole list is the thing at the bottom. Probably most important on this whole list is the thing at the bottom. And it says, in case of, of an emergency, you are here at Cross Country Lane. We, we, we take responsibility for emergency, emergency response seriously. And we want to make sure that if something happens to one of our guests, that they immediately can get help. Okay, we have fire extinguishers throughout, we have several in our barn, we have several in our, in our hay shed building. So what is it that we are? We're a private equestrian for center, as Chris pointed out, we're on twenty four point six two acres. We give riding lessons, we do offer limited boarding. I used to own the main gate facility next door, I sold it to Larry Lang a few years back. And Larry occasionally has a situation where he has more horses than he can board. So I handle this overflow for him. We have hiking, you know, you know, all, all the trails on Larry's property that I sold him earlier this year. I put in plus the trails that we have, so they, they're contiguous, people bike. And this again, this is the key distinction that I wanted to make because I really don't want to be known as a campground. We are a limited overnight RV destination, two spots up to three nights. And this is a really, really interesting thing, and I think the board needs to consider this. If you have these RVs on your property for more than three nights at a time, their gray water system is going to fill up, their black water system is going to fill up. Now, you all may or may not be familiar with what happened across the street from us on the old Weeping Willow Farm property, which an affiliated company of ours purchased, but that's what was going on up there. They had people up there in these, in these travel trailers and they were dumping waste. So again, we're saying three nights and then you gotta go out and you gotta go dump and it's not going to be on our property. So just, so again, what is it that we're not, we're not a campground? We don't offer long term space rental, we don't allow primitive camping on site. No, no waste dumping of any kind, whether it's solid or liquid. No open fires and especially no generator use around our, our, our barn. We have sawdust, we have hay, sometimes our horses are in, those stalls have hay and sawdust in them. And especially when the horses are in, you can't have generators running. So we, we asked the planning commission to please include that, we want to be as restrictive as we possibly can. So I just kind of want to touch a little bit on the benefits, and I think this is something for, for others that may have similar potential venues, here's a new market opportunity. And it's one that promotes the, the beauty that Rockbridge County has. For us, it's a revenue, a brand new revenue source, who, who'd have thought, you know, we're, we're a horse based, equine based company. There is no impact on our neighbors, absolutely none, I'll demonstrate that here in just a second. There's no appreciable increase in traffic, there's no difference really in an RV going, turning into the KOA versus turning into our location. And again, we're talking two, two vehicles a day and as at maximum and two out maximum per day. And again, as I said, the monthly donation to the, the charity of our choice, we think is an added benefit. I want to address some comments that were made previously by, by one of my neighbors. And I just want to, so this is, this is my property, the first screen is my property line and this neighbor that complained about this, looking at my, at my barn and where these RVs are. And what you see is my persimmon grove, okay, with it, it's, it's over a quarter of a mile to my barn complex from here. Okay, there's my persimmon grove and there's my little log cabin sitting on the hill. Okay, and you can't even see my, my barn complex. Similarly, on the right is that perpendicular, a nice gravel spot where we park RVs, looking back. Okay, all you can see is my, my log cabin and that persimmon tree. So there is, there is no obstructive view at, at all, it's just a negative comment from, from, quite honestly, not, not a very good neighbor. This is my property line again with this neighbor looking down my road going east toward Cross Country Lane. You see, I've, I've got my, my, my road posted in three different locations and Spencer knows this to be true. And I'm very, very strict about people driving ten miles an hour because I don't, I don't want dust all over my house. Okay, to the right, you see a huge vegetation barrier for the neighbors on, on the south side of us, okay? On the right side screen facing west, this is our farm road turning into, you know, into, if you will, where my log home is and then down toward the barn complex. So I did want to, I did want to show you all some examples if I, if I can because somebody had mentioned maybe speed, so I do want to show you this. Is that going to work? Well, you see, there's no, there's no speed issues here. Ah, you live or die by, by technology. Let's try this one. Chris, I have no idea what's going on, but it's not working.
Okay, yeah, quick time not available, I'm not certain what's going on, but I.
Okay, but if anybody wants to see it, I, I have it, Chris actually has it. They're not even traveling ten miles an hour, in fact, they're five miles an hour. And if, if you will, you'll see these, um, what look like pebbles on, on the road. Those are actually large boulders. And there's a reason that those things are there, okay, because I don't want anybody driving fast on the property. So I apologize that, that, that didn't work. Let's try it again. This is, this is really the end of the presentation, I don't know why it's not, okay, there it is. So, so with that, that kind of ends our, 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 our presentation. And I would ask that if you have any questions of us, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
At this time, board having questions or comments?
Um, I, I had the, I went out to visit your property, that was probably me driving around. You might, you might have noticed, who is this, who is this driving around? So I, I hope you don't mind, but I, I did that and, and you're correct. It, it did seem that the traffic or the, the speed at which one would drive on that road would be very slow. I did have a hard time find figuring kind of out and I ended up probably bothering your neighbor further down that road. I, those, I guess there are two houses further down past you.
There are, but it, but again, it's our road that they travel over.
Yes, I, I, I understand, but how, how will you make that so that when people come to your operation that they're, that they're not bothering, doing what I just did?
Yes ma'am, so the one thing you didn't know is we actually have a process in place, okay? So people have a reserve, we have a reservation system, okay? Thirty minutes out, they let us know that they're in. They then get a, a text message to call us when they turn on to Cross Country Lane. At that time, I'd guide them in, that's one hundred percent. Okay, so it's, and I'll just go through the spiel with you. They, they say, hey, we're, we just turned on to Cross Country Lane, it's a great, come on up the hill, make your first right, continue bearing to the right. Come on down between the barn buildings, make your left, you, you, you U-turn around the barn and, and your spot is the one that faces the log home, okay? If somebody's already there, the second one comes in, you make a U-turn. Your spot is the one that, that parallels Route eleven and the Blue Ridge Mountains, okay? To my knowledge, we have not had one failure.
Except for me yesterday. Okay, and, and neighbors are very important that, that people would do whatever is necessary to not inconvenience the neighbors. So that, I guess that would be my biggest concern, that people wouldn't end up on other people's property. And that, that road that is also adjacent to a neighborhood right there of, of, you know, residential sub, not subdivision, but a lot of housing right there. And that, and so the traveling slowly and, and that sort of thing would be very important to me as your Buffalo District supervisor.
One hundred percent, and, and again, you drove up, those are my signs that say private road, ten miles an hour. And I expect one hundred percent compliance and I come after people that don't.
Right, well.
And you can, and my employees adhere to those speed limits as well as the people that visit my farm. So that's, that's the most I can do, okay? I have a fifty foot right away, you know, through there and I feel like we're doing everything right.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Rob?
Can I ask one question about your waste? You brought up something that I hadn't considered or ever really thought about is what, what do people do with their gray and black water? So somebody comes and they're just about full because you're kicking them out at three days, where do these things?
Well, they have, they have an option to go to KOA, KOA has a dump site there.
Okay.
Uh, but I get real concerned when people say they're going to be on site for ten days and stuff like that because there's not a lot of good that can happen to them. So I just, I, I ask you in futures to consider that, you're going to get maxed out on gray water's not so bad, right? Gray water is the stuff from your shower and, you know, and your soapy dishes and stuff that runs down, that's not so bad. But you don't want, you know, you don't want waste dumping on your property and I just, I don't, that, that's why I limit it to three days.
So then the, the options in Rockbridge County, Chris, where, where is Chris, what, what are the options?
Kelly Stone, KOA, I mean, there's, there's others, right?
I, I believe you can also take it directly to the MSA plant, I was, I think it was a couple of years ago. That there is an option for.
All right, and you give that information to your, your guests?
We, well, they, absolutely, that's right there, but, but you know, and I, I mean, there is an option and we could always install a, a system. We just, we just don't want it on our property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Have, have you, sorry, have you considered more signage? I know you have the, uh, uh, speed signage, is there any?
Uh, we, we have a sign, we have a sign actually on Mr. Ogden's property that says, we, we have signs out there on two locations. Okay, that say Stone Bridge Equestrian Center.
Sure, I mean, guiding folks to the, to the campground, is, is that something you thought of and wasn't an idea?
This is actually my private farm, I don't want it looking so darn commercialized. If, if, again, I think the process we have in place works. And if I need to report back to you and say, hey, you know, we've got to make some improvements or, yeah, we got people driving up the road or, you know, God forbid something else, you know, we're, we're always willing to, willing to listen. But, you know, it says one hundred cross country lane right at my road and that's where they know that destination is. So to go beyond that.
But in any case, you are personally meeting them or, or greeting them via?
Absolutely.
Via telephone.
And in many cases, I just get out my data and drive them to the location, but we have a process. You, you text me thirty minutes out and then I, I give, I, I say, when you turn on to cross country, you call me. And then I will guide you in.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, sir.
All right, at this time, we will open up the public hearing, is anyone signing up to speak?
Yes, sir, we have Lori Young.
No ma'am, you need to come up for the microphone and if you could just, when you get up there, state your name, magistrate district.
Lori Young, Buffalo. My, my biggest question is with this select one equine campground. My property is close to it, my parents' property is right beside it. The dust from this road filters over and y'all, excuse me, I'm really nervous.
Don't be.
I was there with my mother as she was passing and I saw the motorhomes going in and out. In and out, in and out. And my, I don't mind the business, that's not my problem. My problem is it may be this road could be paved so that it would be less intrusive on us neighbors and on our property because that dust rolls over. And I know he's only going ten miles an hour, but it rolls. And if you're sitting out on my parents' back porch, it rolls over and you can just see it. That's my own, I mean, that is my biggest thing, if we could maybe consider if he would have this road paved and be more like a highway kind of, so it wouldn't have that problem. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Chris, can I see her house on, her property on the screen, please?
Do that now or after?
Oh, I guess afterwards, thank you.
Is anyone else signing up to speak?
There are no hands raised that went online. Is there anyone in attendance who didn't have a chance to sign up or wishes to address the board on this issue? There any written comments that need to be read in?
Yes, I have several. Uh, and so as you know, people, citizens are able to make comments via email, mail or, or drop them off at the Dropbox. So, so this one's a little bit unusual, some of these are a little bit unusual. We actually have two email addresses associated with citizen comments. One directly to y'all is citizen comments at Rockbridge County for rockbridgecountyva.gov. And then the PC is PC hyphen citizen comment. So one that, for consistency, I think I've just would prefer to read all comments received. Some of them were directly addressed to y'all, the one that wasn't directly addressed to y'all, that was received under PC says comments, just says good afternoon. So with that being said, briefly, read all of them and the date received, I should say. So the first one is the following comments represent, excuse me, received on June eighth, twenty twenty two. The following comments represent the position of Keith E. Putt Breeze, Barbara M. Putt Breeze, Elizabeth A. Barker and Gary M. Barker, who with addresses of one seventy, one seventy five Cross Country Lane, Natural Bridge, Virginia. As previously mentioned by our legal counsel, David Natkin, an open case exists between the aforementioned parties of Select Equine Properties LLC, Roberto H. Robertson, acting as the managing member. One of the topics in the case is dispute relating to the maintenance of the shared driveway. This is the same driveway that has been used for months as campers with RV trailers, excuse me, with travel trailers and rock star sized RVs access one hundred cross country lane. We have witnessed a consistent use with as many as four camping units stacked on the property as campers was occupying the property as recently as early this morning. Campers have become a nuisance to the neighbors by stirring up excessive dust while getting lost and getting lost while looking for the campground. Two such instances result in RVs backing into the Putt Breeze yard with each leaving imprinted tracks and one almost baking, backing over or a mental tree. Additionally, Robert H. Robertson and Tracy B. Robertson, as listed in Select Equine Properties LLC, executed a protective covenants and memorandum of agreement documented June twenty sixth and June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. The same document was executed by Keith E. Putt Breeze at all, documents recorded on July twenty fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Page two, under restriction state, quote, number seven, no single wide or double wide homes or house trailers will be permitted on any parcel. This will not preclude licensed horse trailer, manufactured utility trailer or unoccupied travel trailer to be situated on the parcel. Travel trailers may temporarily be located on the property and occupied during periods of construction or visitation by friends. Lastly, there's a portion of the property between one hundred Cross Country Lane and one seventy Cross Country Lane that is protected from development with the intent to prevent encroachment of the home of one seventy Cross Country Lane. There's a concern that initial approval of special exception would, excuse me, exception would open up the door to the area eventually being occupied by campers. Because of these reasons, we do not support the special exception and believe the application is inconsistent with the guidance of the protective covenants. We've reserved the right to rechange our position in the future. Should any changes to the perfect protective covenants be agreeable by all parties governed by the document? Thank you for your time, Keith Putt Breeze at all. The second one is from Donna M. and Edward H. Stolnecker. Good afternoon, we have, we have read the proposal to operate the campground on the property adjacent to our property. The private road Cross Country Lane is within a hundred yards from my home, the land, from the land diagrams included in the agenda. Any vehicles entering the property will turn towards the designated, excuse me, area designated for RV camping and point directly across the property line from our sunroom and pool area. We're concerned about the dust as the road is not paved, the noise of, of overnight campers, the potential and the potential security risk. The proposal is for two RV spots, what is the limitation of a special exception permit? Question mark, or is that just a maximum number of RVs? Question mark. In other words, will additional tent camping be authorized? In addition, we have concerns that once a small number of RVs is authorized, the future request to increase the number of spaces will be approved due to the existing of these proposed spaces. of these proposed spaces. From the original letter attached to the agenda, it's obvious that this is not supportive agricultural business of the horse farm, but to generate business and support tourism. Unfortunately, we do not request, support the request and ask that you withhold approval of the special exception application. Very respectfully, Donna M. and Edward H. Stolnecker. And that was received on June eighth as well. So since that time, uh, and those were both on the very close to the, I think those were the planning commission days. Then on July third, we received, uh, the following from Phil Ogden. Said to address to the supervisors, uh, the honorable, honorable supervisors, my, my name is Phil Ogden. O G D E N of forty-one ninety South Lee Highway, Natural Bridge, Virginia. I am a neighbor of Select Equine Properties, D B A Stone Bridge Equestrian Center. My property is boarded by the S E P on three sides, including cross country lane. I have known Mr. Robertson for approximately forty years and been his neighbor since two thousand sixteen. The special, uh, the S E P property is, uh, maintained and Mr. Robert and all, Mr. Robertson always goes, does the things the right way. We understand his operation and fully support his application to have no more than two recreational vehicles visit his farm on a daily basis. I can also verify that he solely maintains cross country lane. Again, sincerely, Phil Ogden. Uh, the next one is from John K. Pillerman, attorney at law, representing Mr. Robertson, or I think that's correct, by representing Mr. Robertson. The purpose of this letter is to address statements by select equine neighbors, primarily Keith and Barbara Properties and Gary and Elizabeth Barker. The special exception request by select equine is inconsistent with the restrictive covenants governing the property. Select equine has requested that a portion of the property be granted a special exception to allow recreational vehicles on the property in an effort to promote, uh, tourism and philanthropy in Rockbridge County. As pointed out by David Nowfield, counsel for the Putt Breezes and Barkers, uh, there is currently pending, currently pending in the Rockbridge County Clerk Circuit Court, a lawsuit related to the restrictions contained in the restrictive covenants and memorandum of agreement dated July twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen of record in the clerk of the court's office of Rockbridge County and instrument number fourteen zero 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 eighteen fifty-nine, the, in parentheses, restrictive covenants. The only issue in the lawsuit that is relevant to the request for the special exception currently before the supervisors is select equine's request that the court interpret the language of the restrictive covenants, which would require the Putt Breezes and Bakers to, Barker, excuse me, to contribute to the road maintenance of cross country lane, which is owned by select equine and for which the Putt Breezes and Barkers have an easement for ingress egress. Paragraph fourteen provides that, quote, "The maintenance of cross country lane will be shared by adjacent property owners. Despite this language, select equine has solely paid for all road maintenance of cross country lane and has been, and has been unsuccessful in obtaining funds from the other user of lane, namely Putt Baser, Putt Breeze and Barkers for maintenance and repairs. The condition of cross country lane has nothing to do with the occasional recreational vehicle utilizing, using cross country lane and is primarily related to the Barkers and Putt Breeze failing to contribute the necessary repairs as required by the restrictive covenants. Select equine has made a request for contributions from its neighbor who used cross country lane for those repairs. But to date, none of the other users of cross country lane have been willing to contribute any money to help restore and maintain cross country lane. Accordingly, the statements by the Putt Breezes and the Barkers that Rockbridge County is granting special exception will destroy their driveway, which is really a road owned and maintained by select equine. Uh, both are deceptive and misinformed. Further, special exception will not cause select equine. Further, the special exception will not cause select equine to be in violation of restrictive covenants. The restrictive covenant cited by the Putt Breeze in paragraph four, uh, number seven, which states, no single wide or double wide horse trailers will be permitted on any parcel. This shall be, shall, shall not preclude licensed horse trailers, manufactured utility trailers or unoccupied licensed trailers, travel trailers to be situated on the parcel. Travel trailers may be temporarily located on the property and occupied during periods of construction or visitation by friends. Two other paragraphs, would you like me to continue or two other brief paragraphs, I should say. Uh, select equine application does not request the use of the select equine's property for single wides or double wides or mobile homes or horse trailer, which are expressly prohibited in the restrictive covenants, rather request allows for recreational vehicles and or travel trailers or by invited guests to uh, access select equine's properties for the purpose of increasing tourism and to meet the owner's goals in Rockbridge County. Excuse me. The restrictive covenants expressly provide that travel trailers as temporary may be located on the property for visitation. The exact use requested by select equine in its application. Accordingly, the request reuse is not in violation of restrictive covenants and especially finds, uh, special, select equine's special use application should not be deemed based off that false narrative. Thank you. The next one is from Crystal L. Clark. Dear Supervisors, dated July sixth, twenty twenty-two. Dear Supervisors, I'm a longtime resident of Rockbridge County and I support select, select equine properties application for zoning exception. I operate several businesses in Rockbridge and Bodatuck Counties and I'm partners and, and partners in others. Most relevant, I am a partner in Rockbridge Tourism Corridor Partners. We acquired forty-one forty-one South Lee Highway, the twelve acre parcel, previous loan as Weeping Willow Farm, which is directly across Route eleven from Philip and Cheryl Ogden's and select equine properties. My, my partners and I, and I demoed all of the dilapidated structures, thoroughly cleaned the site, removed mountains of trash and recently finished the construction of small farm pond. We will eventually be stocked with fish. We are working with, uh, with a local, local real estate professional to market the property as a potential limited distillery or as a equine estate. Weeping Willow Farm was an example of what happens when things are done wrong. I can tell you, Mr. Robertson is a professional. His property is stunning and I support his willingness to share his property and experience for visitors in the valley. Again, sincerely, Crystal, uh, L. Clark. Next one dated July seventh, twenty twenty-two is from, uh, Mr. Larry Lang, owner of Rusty Roos Farm. I have known Mr. Robertson since two thousand eighteen. Over the past four years, we both had our personal relationship as neighbor as well as a business relationship with multiple real estate transactions conducted between us. Mr. Robertson is a a responsible neighbor and takes pride in his appearance of his property, ensuring that always will be well maintained and immaculate. He recently purchased a large parcel land within our neighborhood that has been neglected for years and transformed it to a desirable and appealing property that is, that certainly enhanced the overall appearance of the neighborhood and local community. As to the special exception request by select equine properties, approval for two camping sites located one hundred cross country lane, Natural Bridge, Virginia. I'm probably the neighbor with the most direct line of sight to the area being considered. The location in question is set up in such a manner that is neither unsightly nor distraction to, for my day to day businesses or for my customers. I have no issues, concerns with the Chris, the request. Again, Larry Lang. Uh, lastly, a letter from Herbert Champion and Sheila Champion dated July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Address to the Board of Supervisors. This letter is in support of Rob Robertson's special exception permit to operate a limited recreational vehicle campground, agricultural and general use districts for his property located one hundred cross country lane, Natural Bridge, Virginia. Select Equine Properties LLC, tax map number ninety-seven dash fourteen dash A. We have known the Robertson, I'm sorry, we have known Rob Robertson since May of two thousand thirteen, when we first purchased a property located one eight five Orchard Vale Way, Natural Bridge, Virginia, two four five seven eight. Tax map number ninety-seven dash A dash thirteen. At the time, Rob Robertson owned the adjacent property to our southeast and southwest property lines, known then as the Stone Bridge Equestrian Center, now Main Gate Equestrian Center. Rob was the first neighbor who came to meet, greet, uh, came over to greet us and welcome us to the neighborhood. Over the last nine years, he's continued to be a wonderful, helpful and incredibly supportive neighbor. His, uh, he has his mowed grass, excuse me, he has mowed our grass when we are not able to spray our fence line and driveways for wheezes and even got our cars and mowers unstuck. We are aware that Mr. Robertson, uh, that we're aware that Rob Robertson has applied for a special exception to operate a limited use R V campground on his property. Even though our property is no longer directly adjacent to Rob's, we fully support his special exception application. Rob has always been proven to be very responsible, forthright and honest neighbor who takes the utmost care and pride maintaining his property. We have no doubt that he will continue to provide the same level of responsible property management with his new endeavor and allow limited use R V camping on his property. Thank you for your time for reading this. Respectfully, Herbert W. Champion and Sheila M. Champion. That's all the written comments we have.
Thank you. All right. At this point, we will close the public hearing. Board discussion, any comments, concerns, questions?
Chris, I would like to see various people that, oh.
In anticipating, uh, that I have color coded map.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Uh, here you go. And so I will also point out this Young's property. Uh, but what we have here, what I have on my screen. Bear with me, I will share my screen. All right. So get everyone oriented. Uh, South Lee Highway is here, uh, going back towards Lexington in this area. If you can see my mouse screen up here. Uh, and then of course, going back towards Fancy Hill itself, or the Fancy Hill interchange, I should say, back towards south. So the Robertson property is outlined in magenta associated with here. Uh, and then to go through the, well, I'll just hit identify actually. To go through the, the people that we've heard from, if you will.
Zoom in just a little bit, Chris.
All right. So again, the Robertson property is here consisting of twenty-four point six two acres. Going, uh, essentially, we'll, we'll start here and go clockwise. This is the, uh, owned by Edward and Donna Stolnecker Family Trust located here. That's being highlighted in green. This one is Keith Butt Breeze. This is the Gary and Elizabeth Barker. And all of those have, of course, letters that are read this evening on, in opposition. And I'll just continue going, um, clockwise and then get back to this Young's property, I believe. This is going to be Larry Lang's Rusty Roots Farm LLC, owns two tax parcels in the area. That is this one and that one. This is going to be the Champion property here. This is the Rockbridge Tourism Corridor property. That is, was formerly known as Weeping Willow. Uh, I will note that that was being utilized as a campground that resulted in a zoning violation letter. Uh, and they ended up putting the property for sale soon after, uh, soon after the zoning violation letter.
And who owns that now?
That is, um, Rockbridge Tourism Corridor Partners, and we heard from them with, uh, Mr. Miss Crystal Clark, and I believe Mr. Robertson's involved in that LLC as well. Okay. And then bear with me here. Miss Young, you might have to help sixteen. Perfect. Miss Lori, Lori Young is located here on sixteen. Okay, perfect. So her dad is the forty-two forty-eight. Okay, father is, uh, under Charles Flowers. Peggy, okay, perfect. Uh, so they own these two pieces of property there.
Thank you, Chris.
And so I will say that we have, uh, you know, we did receive these prior to the second. Uh, the Ogden's. Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I skipped over that one. This is the Ogden property. There. Uh, so since these obviously came in after the planning commission, but prior to the notice of public hearing, uh, I will note that, that we did do a second notice of public, as required by state law, we did do a second notice of public hearing that included certified mail, uh, to all the direct land adjourners. Posting, well, property has been posted since the, the special exception application was submitted and then, uh, certified mail to all the adjacent landowners and then newspaper advertisements of a notice of public hearing. We have not received any uh, written comments under the second notice of public here.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I would just like to note, uh, that, that, um, I, I agree that, I, I understand that Mr. Robertson doesn't consider it a campground, but rather a limited R V destination, but per our ordinance that I shared the definition with you, it does fall well within the campground definition, which is a good thing because if it wasn't provided for, it would not be allowed essentially. So it does fit in. In my opinion, it does fit in with the campground definition. Like, thank you. What's up? And I think I asked this question last time and I'm still struggling with it exactly. I know that civil matters are civil matters and that's not our purview nor something we should be considering. However, if the civil matter involves ownership of the property in which is being considered, where, where, I'm speaking to Ms. Huffman, sir. Thank you. Where, how, how does that factor or not? Is, is my question clear at all?
I think when it comes into play for, for us is whether or not we have a valid application. So if we learn, for example, that an action was taken without, um, the proper owner signing, then, then there would be a jurisdictional issue with the action that was taken. A dispute of ownership, I don't think necessarily, I think it depends on the situation, but I don't think it necessarily, um, impacts the ability to take action. Sometimes we do conditional, conditions related to that questionable aspect of the title. In this case, I don't think there's any issue about the ownership. I think it's about the use.
Yeah, I thought the ownership piece had been cleared up with the signing of the application.
That part of it had been with the signing of that application, but then, um, the, the right of way is actually shown on our records as being owned by the applicant. Now, whether I, I assume there are other people who have rights to use that and.
I assume the one seventy, one seventy-five has rights to use country.
That, that's what's been expressed for us. So, so there, to be clear there, I am uncertain. I, I'm not known of any, um, dispute in ownership. You know, it's been surveyed and it's shown as cross country lane. Mr. Robertson does own the, the land and the ground under it, but it's our understanding that the, the two, two, uh, families in the rear, if you will, have a right of way, uh, ingress egress easement, if you will, over the Robertson's property. I'm sorry, over the select equine properties LLC.
So, did I answer your question?
You did.
Any other discussion?
I will only say that when I have, especially in the Buffalo District, I, I try to, um, make sure that the use that, that we're, would be granting a special exception does not impact overly impact, I will say, the neighbors around them. And I went to the site yesterday as, as I've already admitted, getting lost. And other than getting lost and impacting by going into, I, I assume it was one seventy or one seventy-five. I what, I was pleasantly, um, I felt that two, uh, two sites would definitely be visually, they're not, they do not impact anybody other than the applicant. So for me, that was, that was very important. The, the generators, I feel like the planning commission does a good job by not having generators. That would be a no go for me because the whole neighborhood would have to listen to generators. I am a little concerned about the dust, of course. The going ten miles an hour. And, and it's not, along that one road, there is literally, I, I would say there are seven, it looks to me like seven, seven houses, seven, eight houses. So a full on campground would not, I don't think it would be a suitable site. For two sites, I, I feel compelled to give the owner what they would like to use their, their property that way. So I, I feel that it's a reasonable request for two sites.
So is that a motion for approval?
If, if everybody else has finished talking. If, if everybody else has finished talking, I will make it a motion for.
And is there a second to that?
A second.
All right. Any other discussion?
I'd just like, uh, Mr. Robin, you seem like a, a very reasonable person and having, uh, attention to detail. Would you provide your neighbors with a, uh, your contact information, especially when it's, for when it's dry and dusty out? Maybe you could water down your road, if possible, or they can let you know if there's a problem with dust. Obviously, I wouldn't think today there would have been, or with all this rain we've had, but I can imagine when it gets really dry, it could be dusty. And I would think you might have the equipment to dampen the road when it's dry and dusty.
And, and one discreet sign, one discreet sign, making sure that people know where you're, where it is, I think, would also be a lot, so something to keep them from bothering the one seventy and one seventy-five.
I would put an arrow to the right, right at my drive, if that will work. And then, two, yes, sir. Again, if I maintain the road, I have a water rag if we need to do something like that. I might even look at.
Okay.
Larger issue with the lawsuit, and quite honestly, I've got neighbors who have been unwilling to participate.
Right.
That, that's.
And that's why I'm just suggesting.
All right. Thank you. And, and just to be clear, the motion and the second, that's not part of the motion.
No, it was just comments after.
Director's assignment, the watering is not part of, you're just making a recommendation to.
I'm just discussing.
I also made a recommendation for science.
Right.
But it's not part of the motion.
You want to make that, we can back it up.
No, we have a motion. We have a second.
I trust the owner to, to do those things for us.
It's time to vote. All right. Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well. Thank you. All right. Let's back up to consideration of erosion and sediment control, stormwater plans review contract.
Uh, yes, sir. We got, um, we've received, uh, two proposals. Um, one from A. Morton Thomas and Associates Incorporated, from Hurt and Profit, staff, um, reviewed and ranked those, and has selected A. Morton Thomas and Associates Incorporated. Uh, we recommend, uh, the board approve the two-year contract with them.
All right. Hearing the recommendations, is there a motion to adopt? And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next, we have a consideration to schedule a public hearing on hazmat ordinance and resolution.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I'm covering for Nathan tonight. Uh, we've been billing for hazmat response for many years. More recently, insurance companies have balked at payment citing the fact that recovery of these costs is not in our local code. The ordinance in your package would codify the billing practice. The request is for the board to consider setting public hearing for your next meeting on September twenty-six, and should you ultimately approve the ordinance amending chapter fourteen of county code, uh, you would then need to adopt a resolution setting billing rates.
Great. Discussion, questions?
You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm moving to say for September twenty-six.
All right. Is there a second? All right. Any other discussion, question? All right. Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis?
I.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next, we have consideration to schedule a public hearing of lifetime dog tag ordinance.
Let me.
This, Ms. Huffman?
Oh, yeah. You want me to start? Okay. Well, we're, we're on tag team, this one. Um, yes, the, uh, I want to thank the Finance Committee. Uh, they've worked, they've had several meetings on this topic, um, and have really narrowed down, um, and did a lot of work, um, coming to this conclusion. Um, but a little bit of background, um, with the dog tags, where counties are mandated to issue dog tags by the state. Uh, however, we are allowed to issue lifetime dog tags. The counties can, um, is their discretion to have, um, male, female, spay neutered categories. Currently, we do have those categories. Uh, state statute limits the maximum charge to fifty dollars. Uh, this will come up later in the discussion, but for the purposes of dog tags, state statute defines a kennel as five plus dogs, and that's, um, that's irrespective of, uh, other zoning regulations and stuff like that, specific to the dog tags.
Um, the main purpose of this is to try to help, help make it easier for the citizens and a little more cost-efficient for the citizens. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes. Yes, sir. So our current, um, uh, unsexed dog license, annual license is two fifty. A male dog is five, female seven fifty. Kennel up to twenty-five dollars is fifty dollars, and a kennel up to fifty dogs is one hundred dollars. And then there's a dangerous dog, but that's kind of set by the courts at first, and then, um, then eighty-five dollars per year thereafter.
I think, uh, picking up on what supervisor McDaniel was going, I think, I think everybody's read all this.
Okay.
And.
I'll just get to the.
I'd get to the recommendation.
Real point. Okay. Sorry.
Get to the good part.
So.
I just go to the recommendation.
The, uh, the recommendation is to, um.
Set a public hearing?
Is to set a public hearing to consider lifetime dog tags for dogs, uh, with very clear kennels would still be an annual permit.
Okay.
And there, there, there's a couple of things there. There's, there's one small piece in this, uh, that involves review by, uh, the, the, um, commercial revenue for, for business license, and also the Office of Community Development for zoning. That is still under discussion. Uh, it is in there now, but the potential exists. We want to get some more input from those two folks.
We are, are going to get.
We're, we're going to get to before, but so there may, there may be a suggested change by the finance committee.
But my understanding was to, to go with the resolution that we have now, because we can amend that, we can remove items, you know, or amend that, uh, as we go before the advertisement. So we still have some time, but I, as you pointed out, the overall approach here is to make it easier on the citizen and sync up with some state code, as Ashton was pointing out, the kennel definition and that sort of.
Right. We just need to clean up some language, so we don't confuse people. When you say kennel license, you're talking about an individual who might own a certain number of dogs. You're not talking about a commercial kennel. Uh, they're two different, so we've got to clean up some language within two weeks, but we should, I'd move, we go ahead and schedule the public hearing.
Second.
And give us time.
Can I ask one question? But, but that situation and the lifetime, I mean, those are two distinct. Thanks. There's the lifetime dog.
Yes.
And then there's this other.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. The kennels would still have to be an annual permit.
And, and I would recommend for any board members have questions, concerns, or comments to get with this Finance Committee, who's been working on it, Mr. Lyons and Mr. Lewis, uh, especially prior to the public hearing, so we can try to iron this stuff out as quick as possible. Now, we have a motion by Mr. Lyons to set the public hearing for September twenty-six, and, and Mr. Lewis, second. All right. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next, we have a consideration to, of amendment to the county decal ordinance for duplicate decals. Ms. Huffman?
Yes, sir. Um, actually, January first, uh, twenty twenty-two, county code was amended to eliminate the annual county decals and provided for a permanent undated decal at a cost of twenty-five dollars. Duplicate decals were also eliminated, and a new county decal was required at the twenty-five dollar fee, um, for a replacement, if needed. The Finance Committee has considered some complaints due to failure to receive purchased decals through the mail in particular. There may be other circumstances, but the, the mail seems to be the culprit. Um, the committee is recommending that section twenty-five one hundred be amended to allow for purchase of replacement decals upon receipt by the treasurer of an affidavit that the decal was lost or destroyed for the fee of five dollars instead of the twenty-five. You have a proposed ordinance. If acceptable, the, uh, recommendation is to schedule for public hearing at the September twenty-sixth meeting.
Any questions about that?
Well, if this being a county ordinance, do we need an ordinance to pertain to somebody who falsifies the application or the affidavit?
Um, I believe there is a statement in there. Um, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe there's a statement in there that there, it constitutes a violation for anybody to make a false statement.
But do we need an ordinance to pertain to that?
But that is in the ordinance. That is the ordinance.
Okay. All right.
So you're thinking correctly, and it is included. Yes, sir.
I'll find it for you. I just don't have it handy right now.
Are you asking about an ordinance around falsifying a statement? Not necessarily inside that ordinance, that it's illegal to falsify a statement. Are you asking about two different things?
This being a county or an ordinance, that you got to have the county tax. And if they falsify the affidavit, can that fall under a state ordinance to falsify a government or legal document? Or do we have to have our own ordinance pertaining to somebody who falsifies?
It very well could, but I believe there is a provision in our ordinance that says a false statement is a violation.
All right. So the, the recommendation is to advertise for a public hearing on September twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve that? So move and second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
We'd have gotten rid of Spencer. We wouldn't be doing this, just saying.
All right. Um, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Uh, next up, we have Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, Mr. Samuel Vest. Term expires on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I have talked to Mr. Vest, and he is willing to be reappointed.
So move.
And it's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next, we have the Board of Equalization Appointments. Um, has everybody talked to someone or found someone for their district?
I, I have. I wasn't aware we needed reapplications, but I can let them know.
If you'll let, um, Ms. Whitton know, she'll get an application sent out to him.
Mr. Wilson is willing to be approved and would like to be.
And I believe, uh, you've got an application from my district for that as well?
And one from Car Street.
Okay.
Can we notify the applicants that I thought we were going to vote tonight, that, that, when the vote will be, so they don't think, but I've got.
Well, uh, we'll take a vote on September twenty-sixth. Is that accurate? Is that good for you? I'm asking a personal charge. All right. Uh, so if, if you don't have someone yet, please get them as soon as possible, because we need to get an application out to them.
We'll do.
And, and we need to get that filled out, so we can vote on.
You always need an alternate.
Okay. Uh, we added, uh, the Raro appointee, um, as mentioned in previous meeting. Uh, Mr. Paige Owens is interested in serving on the Raro Board of Directors beginning in October. At this time, his application has been received and meets all the criteria. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Owens to the Raro Board of Directors with the term effective October first, twenty twenty-two?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lewis?
I.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the staff reports?
Yes.
Is there any questions, concerns, comments, or a motion to approve as presented?
With appreciation.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. All right. Let's see here. Any board comments? Anybody have any comments or committee reports or anything?
Do we have a joint meeting Thursday?
No, sir. It's on the twenty second.
Twenty.
Twenty second.
Second.
What meeting with who?
The school board.
School board. I will be out that day.
Any other comments?
Is that a day change from a regular time?
Yes.
Uh, as we have met tonight on September twelfth, I, I would just like to remind everyone, uh, of the meeting of September eleventh, and, uh, to all of our firemen, rescue squad workers, the MS, police officers, everybody, we appreciate, uh, all that you do for our county and our citizens, and, um, be thinking of you during this time as well. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Thank you, everyone, for attending.